As people are filtering in here, I'll take this opportunity to introduce myself. I'm Tyson Hermes, the mayor of Erlanger. And I'd like to take this opportunity just to welcome you out. Thanks for coming out this evening. A quick housekeeping item, if you need to use the restroom, it's right outside. The door is here and to the right. And I wanted to just take this opportunity to thank Jessica Fettie for putting this together this evening, coordinating us. And I'll go ahead and just turn it over to her.
Okay. Thank you so much for taking time out of your evening to come and learn with us tonight. Gathered here tonight are resources from all around the Northern Kentucky community. Each person that will speak tonight and each person on the panel plays a role every day in the prevention, treatment, and response of drug addiction. They are here tonight to illustrate what's going on within our community and what resources are available to those battling addiction or in recovery and the family and friends of those addicted or in recovery. Drug addiction does not affect one individual person. It affects our community as a whole, and it is our responsibility to come together and show compassion, support, and most of all, hope. I want to thank all of our speakers and our panelists for being here today. I'd like to first introduce King County Judge Executive Chris Knackelman. Danielle Matthew from St. Elizabeth's Baby Steps Program. Rebecca Elliston from CHNK Behavioral Health. Jim Biding, the CEO of Transitions. Amanda Peters, who is the coordinator of the Heroin Impact Response Task Force. Charlotte Weddington, who is the mother of Casey and the initiator of Casey's Law. Terry Carl, the Kitten County jailer. Jason Merrick from the Kitten County Detention Center. Chief Todd Brendel from the Erlanger Police Department. And last but certainly not least, Chief Todd Whitaker from the Erlanger Fire Department. There will be seven speakers tonight, followed by a brief training on administering Narcan. The panel will conduct a question and answer session after the training. Everyone should have received a few note cards. If you need some, raise your hand and I'll bring you some. Just please make sure that you're writing down your questions. We'll be collecting those prior to the Narcan training. Now I'll turn it over to Amanda Peters, who's going to get us started.
Okay. Well, good evening. Thank you all for coming tonight. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about our heroin response in Northern Kentucky and some of the issues that are facing us, and then I'll let the panel go into more detail. So I'll touch lightly on some of these subjects. Okay. So I coordinate a task force for eight counties in Northern Kentucky. And what we do is we partner with law enforcements, jails, hospital systems, providers, advocacy groups. We also look at folks that are in higher education, in research, and we're looking at reentry and support services. So we're looking at the picture and how do we bring folks to the table to solve this as this problem goes over many scopes. It's a huge scope of problem that's hitting many systems. And what we do, again, is we look at this from eight counties. We know that the problems are very diverse, from our rural counties in Carroll County to the more urban counties in Campbell County, but the problem is hitting all of us. And we partner with folks that regionally from Ohio, as well as we're reaching out to folks in Indiana as well, because we know the drugs are not staying just in one side of the river. It travels across. So why the need for a task force? We have a task force because we know we need to bring people together. We have a limited amount of resources, and we want to look at maximizing them and also bringing people together for strategic partnerships. And what we're doing is something like the Kitten County Jail, how we're putting addiction treatment right in the jails. We're always looking at ways that we can increase pathways to treatment, because we know we can't incarcerate our way out of this. We've got to bring treatment to these folks. And some of the other things we're doing is to, we want to reach all folks and all families struggling with this. We know that addiction is a disease for the whole family. It doesn't just affect one person. And we also want to look at reducing the burden on our tax dollars and our systems that it affects. So our mission is to ensure that the people of Northern Kentucky receive life-saving and life-restoring resources, but also to reduce the impact on our communities. And we do this under a framework of six pillars. So we want to look at prevention, treatment, recovery, as well as harm reduction, supply reduction, and advocacy. We know all these pieces together are going to solve this issue. So why Kentucky? Kentucky, we know, has the highest number of privately insured individuals addicted to pain medicines. And what this means with privately insured is that at least one person in this family is working, if not the person struggling themselves. So we know down the road that this is going to hit us in many different ways. So that's an important part to this equation. We also know that pharmaceutical opioids was the primary cause of death in 2015 in Kentucky. And we also know that there's aggressive marketing tactics that were brought in in 1979 from folks like Purdue Pharmaceutical companies, and they made pain as the fifth vital sign. So people started looking at pain differently, coupled with these pharmaceutical companies started putting on conferences and paying for different things. And so that brought in an easier way, so folks are getting over-prescribed these medications. And another interesting fact is that these entrepreneurial cartels that we have, you know, these are sophisticated business models. These aren't just folks, you know, that you're thinking about drug dealing in different decades. These are new sophisticated models. And what they're doing is they actually have a delivery system. And something that I've just learned in the last couple of days is there's even something called bootleg groups, and there's even Facebook pages. So these bootleg groups are actually not only delivering the drugs, but it's almost like a taxi system. So if you get connected with one of these folks, they will pick you up and deliver you to where you need to get the things that you're looking for. So it's hitting us in every way possible. So even folks that are struggling to stay in recovery, you know, they're on Facebook, and they're seeing different ways that these drugs will get delivered to them. And then there's also this customer service element that is new to this kind of arena. So before you could call up and, you know, you might not get what you needed, or you weren't happy with your products, so to speak, but now when you complain, they will deliver you a new batch to your door, and they will give it to you for free. And they might even couple it with methamphetamines or other drugs, because they know that the response to the opioid problem is getting more comprehensive, so they're looking at different ways to grow their market as well. And I want to go back to this fact that 80% of heroin users started with prescription painkillers. You know, I talked to folks in recovery, and one of the things that I've learned is that some people were up to a 40 pill a day problem. And 40 pills a day at $40 is $1,600 a day. So when you're looking at that kind of money, and someone comes and offers you heroin for $5, it's very easy to make that jump. And these are the same folks that live in our communities. These are our neighbors, these are our brothers, our sisters, our children, our parents. And it's really easy to make that jump, even though they swore they were never going to do that. They weren't going to stick the needle in their arm. There are different things that they swore they were never going to do, but it's a different kind of tactics, and they make that leap that way. Another thing that is important to look at the picture overall is the trauma factor. So we know that children and adolescents and adults that have adverse childhood experiences are more likely to be addicted to substances. And what these adverse childhood experiences, or what we call ACEs, are things like food insecurity. In Kentucky, we know that almost one in four kids are food insecure. These are kids in our neighborhoods today. We also know the highest rate of childhood homelessness. This is another one of those ACEs. And the other things listed on this list may be someone who's incarcerated, folks that are divorced, people that are living with domestic violence. And once these things keep ticking up, their likelihood to be addicted to substances increases as well. So it's important that we're looking at these ACE scores when we're talking about prevention and education to get the tools for folks that they need. And I want to look a little bit at the data. So we know that Kentucky in 2015 was third in the nation for overdose deaths, behind West Virginia and New Hampshire. We also know that the rate for 100,000 deaths is 29.9, but in Kentucky, in Northern Kentucky, it's almost at 50%. So we're above that average. And then the demographic with the highest drug overdose rate is 34 to 44 years, is what we're seeing. And you can see where Kitten County falls in there, and Campbell County, and then some of the other counties I work in is Gallatin. So three of our Northern Kentucky counties are in the top eight of our state of Kentucky. We want to look at heroin overdoses, and these are just the ones that are sent to the emergency room. This is not the complete picture of what this looks like. Not everyone who overdoses is called, is going to the ER. We also know that law enforcement is, not all law enforcement agencies are transporting them, and we also know that people aren't even calling services at that time, and friends are saving them, and unfortunately, some don't make it. But we know that these are the data that's going to the ERs. So in 2016, we're at 1,584, and this year, from January to August, we've already hit that. And I'm sure by this time, I don't have that new data, but we've probably already overcome that. And I'm seeing heads shaking from my St. Elizabeth data person saying that we have to confirm. So we've already gone beyond that, and there are hundreds of people in this arena responding to this every day. I can't imagine what those numbers would be if we weren't doing what we were already doing. So another thing that we want to look at, just to kind of give you a picture of the response, is that we are taking this data very seriously, and we want to house it in a place to keep it all comprehensive. So the Northern Kentucky Health Department has put together this opioid story map, and you can find this on Google if you Google opioid story map, Northern Kentucky Health Department, and this will pop up. It's an interactive site, and all the dots on the side are different pages that you can go to, and it can show you where the resources are and where your zip code. You can look at treatment, you can look at different responses, and it'll give you a lot of data in different ways to really look at this picture if you want to dig in a lot deeper. And this is really just a quick view into this, and I know I'm going very fast and throwing a lot of things at you to keep in my 10-minute timeframe. Another thing we want to look at is in 2015, the CDC came out with a list of 220 counties that were the most vulnerable for HIV or Hep C outbreak. Kentucky has, Northern Kentucky has four of those, and the state of Kentucky, I think, has 56, but I'm not sure. But, so, 54 are from Kentucky. So when we're talking about programs like syringe access needle exchange, this is what we want to do. That's a harm reduction strategy that we want to give folks with the tools that they need not to spread these diseases. I know at times that can be controversial, and I hear a lot of times, are we enabling folks to do this? But we're giving them the tools, and we're building those relationships to get them integrated into a system of care. These folks need medical care, and this is one way to do it. So this comprehensive collaborative approach, we want to take a systems approach, and we want to increase pathways into treatment. And one of those is also this syringe access exchange programs. And I know at the Grant County, that's the only one that we have within our health district is seeing people. And once they opened this up, they had folks that were already in their programs. They had soccer moms coming to get their clean needles. They already built relationships with these folks, they tried to get the medicine, and they're seeing referrals. And I know last time I went down there, because I like to dig into the details, and I actually sat in the lobby, I went through an appointment, like a mock appointment, to see what it was like. And what they were telling me is that somebody had relapsed on Friday, and by Wednesday, they were already back, because they know there's an addiction counselor on site, and it was another pathway into treatment. She got what she needed, and she said, "Well, when am I going to see the addiction counselor?" She had a relapse, she had a death in the family, she deals with bipolar. So these are just symptoms of this whole picture, and she was able to get the things that she needed and connected right back into treatment. We're also looking at, to increase those options with medication-assisted treatment. And those are things like methadone, suboxone, vivitrol, and those are ways that you can combat this disease by turning off the opiate receptors, and what we are looking at is a brain disease. So, and I will let our treatment professionals talk more about that. We also want to partner with law enforcement and first responders. We know that this is creating a lot of work for them. It's really putting pressure on them, and we want to reduce the recidivism rates, and we want to part with them to make the best decision. Anytime I talk to our first responder, their number one thing is, "We're going to save the life. We are going to help them, we're going to save the life." But we also want to help the first responders help them as well. And then we want to rely on data. We want to use evidence-based practices to make our decision-making. We want to know what's working, and we want to implement it here to make sure that we're in line with what data is telling us. And our response in Northern Kentucky, again, is prevent, treat, support. We want to prevent future generations, we want to prevent the drugs from getting on the street in the first place, we want to treat current users, and then we want to support those in recovery. So everything that we're looking at is going to complete the holistic picture of how do we prevent, treat, and support this for every single person dealing with this, as long as down the road as well. And that's when we bring in the ACEs for prevention, we're working with our county coalitions to get information to the schools and families, as well as getting treatment options to them. And so we want to do that by simplifying the way into treatment. We want to increase those pathways and look at an integrated system of care. Long-term, we're looking at what on-demand treatment looks like. And one of those ways that we're looking at is St. Elizabeth is opening a new bridge clinic. And so what that means is folks are going to the ER to overdose. There's actual, a place for them to stay and not be going sent out the door, so that what they can do is receive some of this medication-assisted treatment. When someone does Narcan, it sends them into immediate withdrawal. These folks have psychological, emotional, physical withdrawal. They feel pretty crummy. And what they need is to get the medication to bring that fight-or-flight reaction down, as well as to get to the point where they can make decisions if they're ready for treatment. And that's one of the things St. Elizabeth is going to be doing, and that's pretty innovative and exciting in our area. Some of the ways we want to increase pathways to treatment is we have our Northern Kentucky Addiction Helpline, and I know there's cards at the back of the room. And in Erlanger, I know they did a canvassing, but you can get more of those cards. We're looking at quick response teams and angel teams, which is a pre-arrest diversion. And what that means is we want to take folks that were historically placed in the criminal justice system and divert them out and get them the treatment, support services, and resources that they need for whatever ailment may be getting to them. In this case, it is addiction and drugs. But what Erlanger is getting ready to do, which is super exciting, groundbreaking, and innovative work, is they're going to be hiring a police social worker. I don't know if you've seen this, but this is very, very big news. It's going to be the third in the state. And what it's looking at is that this person will conduct home visits, and it will take that pressure off the criminal justice system and the police force from talking with some of the folks that traditionally you may have called the police, and their social worker will deal with more than addiction. They'll look at homelessness, they'll look at food insecurity, domestic violence, any of these social ailments that bring our community down and put a burden on our different systems is the social worker will be able to respond to those. And it's a mechanism of community policing. So this is big news for Erlanger. This is very good news. We're also looking, I mentioned the bridge clinic, I mentioned the addiction treatment in the jail, we have the treatment for women in Campbell County, and then we have both men and women in Kitten County, and that is a nationally recognized program, and I'm sure Jason Merrick will talk more about that. We have Casey's Law, which is a pathway into treatment, and we have Casey's mom, Charlotte, here, and she can speak a little bit about that. So please ask your questions. And what that is, is it's petitioning the courts for involuntary treatment. Other ways into treatment is we want to look at the syringe access, as well as street outreach teams. We currently have teams that are going into strip clubs in our region. The average age for a stripper in our area is 38 years old, and they have 3.2 kids. And it's usually a generational problem. And most of these people, up to 85%, are cycled into the drug scene. And almost 99% say that if they had another option, they'd get out of there. So we have teams going to serve them dinner, build those relationships, give them another options, and get them into treatment if that's what they want. So just another way that we're increasing pathways into treatment. I talked a little bit about the pre-arrest teams, pre-arrest diversion teams, and this is just, again, a slide on that. So I'm going to move forward. And then I wanted to mention the treatment continuum. Now, this is not set for everyone, and this is an individualized, folks need individualized treatment. I'm really not used to talking to a microphone, so this is kind of throwing me off. So, but we're looking at crisis intervention through Narcan, but not everyone is going to be Narcaned in this situation. You know, you can go to detox, but not everyone's going to need that. Some of these folks can go straight into medication-assisted treatment and get some intensive outpatient therapies. And what IOP is, that intensive outpatient therapies, is three times a week of therapy of three hours. That's a lot of therapy in a week. But this is what our folks need. And they also need outpatient therapies and then aftercare. We know that getting into treatment is a hard part, but living in recovery is the harder part, and we need to create communities that are going to support recovery. And relapse is often part of this disease. I talk a lot with employers and workforce folks, and to make sure they explain, they understand this continuum, as well as some of these folks, they may relapse. We know it's coming, and that's important for you guys to know, because I know a lot of times when we get folks in the treatment, we think, "Oh, okay." But sometimes that's a lot when the hard work starts. Talking a little bit about workforce, we know we're seeing more increase in drug screens, negative drug screens. We're seeing an increase in FMLA filing, and that could be with the person dealing with the disorder, or with family members who are raising the relatives of these folks. We're also looking at higher workman compensation payouts, and we're looking at premiums increasing because the treatment aspect's connected to the insurance. So I'm talking a lot with workforce, and we have, what we have is we're now having companies come on board, and someone like Dormin Products, that's in one of my rural counties, is they're actually creating kind of an environment where it's a recovery workplace. So they have mentors on site, they have meetings on site, they have connection to treatment if they need it, and it's that holistic picture, again, as people come into the workplace, and how can they get the things that they need? And I think we're going to see a lot more of that as this, of our efforts ramp up with workforce. Some of our accomplishments, like the things that we're doing today, increased community participation, the Alexandria Social Work Program, I can add Erlanger to that, and then I've talked a little bit about these other things, but we're doing lots of work around this arena. How can you help? You can get involved. If you see drug activity, report it to the Northern Kentucky Drug Strike Force. They're tracking this, they're checking in. Report to your local police. Also, participate in the door hanger campaigns, volunteer or donate if you can, and then just try to be involved and get informed. Our biggest barrier, I think, is going to be stigma, and the quicker we break that down, the quicker we're going to save the lives that we need. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Amanda. Next, we have the Erlanger Police and Fire Chiefs that are going to speak.
I'm delegated to speak. I think Ms. Peters covered it all. I think there's anything, there was so much information in there. You know, I can speak from one side of it, and that's going to be the public safety side. And, you know, I can sit here and I can tell stories about working in Covington for 25 years, or out here for eight years, and I can tell you about responses and things like that. I can give you a bunch of statistics of runs that we make, but I want to talk about the frustration that the public safety workers have. And it's not due to a lack of empathy. Everybody that wears a uniform in public safety, somewhere under that crusty skin and that, you know, thick skin, there is empathy. It's what it takes to do what we do. But we're frustrated, and we're frustrated because we see individuals again and again, or we see the circumstances that result in what addiction brings. And the frustration results not from that, but the fact that we're with them from point A to point B. We have a very small amount of time with them. After that, it's turned over. We don't know what happened to that resident or that citizen unless we see them again. And I know you touched base on the social worker, and this is a complete game changer for our industry. This is something that, you know, I have Deputy Chief Rhonda Wolf of EMS sitting out there, and I had her doing home visits since she had that position, because it was important to me to try to get this to stop. You know, we can deliver the Narcan, anybody, you know, I don't want to say anybody, we can deliver the Narcan, we can take them to the hospital, we can save a life. Yay, team. But that's not the end of the story. And when that story continues, that's where it hits us, and that's where it frustrates us. It's not the fact we're up at 4:00 in the morning, it's not the fact that we went to see this person three times, it's our job. But we know that it just doesn't end there. And as public safety, the social worker is going to be a huge impact. It makes sense. I got to spend some time with Ms. Pompilio in Alexandria, and in five hours, it was amazing the work that she was done. And on the addiction side of it, there were so many other things that she touched, but on the addiction side of it, we were sitting with a family, and it was a young man in his early twenties, and he had been addicted, was addicted to heroin, is addicted to heroin. Came forth, was asking for help, begging for help, couldn't get in a clinic for two months. That was as soon as he could get in. There were some insurance issues, there was other things, they didn't have room. Ms. Pompilio, in 15 minutes, made sure that he would get. So from two months to two days, she spent 12 minutes making calls, connections, and got it done. And that's what we can't do. I can't do that. Police department can't do that. We can go and treat them initially, take care of them, do what we do, but it's not enough. So please don't think that public safety is not caring and, you know, looks the other way, and this is a big issue. We are just frustrated because we're doers, we're helpers, we like to make sure it's all shut, closed, and neatly categorized, and we can't do that with this problem. The social worker's going to be a big help. If you want some statistics, you can ask some questions, we can give you the statistics from Erlanger, the arrests and things like that, but my boss said five minutes, and he's looking at me, so that's my time.
Thanks so much, Chief. Now we have Transitions CEO Jim Biding.
Well, thank you, and thanks to the city for hosting this. This is a great event and a good time to get a lot of people together to share a lot of good information and hopefully a lot of good questions, and hopefully we can get some answers tonight. So Transitions, for those of you who don't know, it's a local nonprofit. We do a lot of drug and alcohol treatment, a lot of residential and outpatient drug and alcohol treatment. Got several locations in Northern Kentucky. One of those is the Grateful Life Center, which is right down on the 3L. We've got, we've been in that building since 2009. There's 100, as of this morning, I get a report every morning, as of this morning, there was 109 guys in that place. They're there anywhere from six months to 12 months. We've had some good success out of there. I don't think we've ever, our capacity there is 110. I don't think we've ever been below 100 in that building, so know that there's 109 guys right down the hill there, and that's a good thing, and they're doing some good work down there. One of the new things that we're doing here shortly, and working in collaboration with Kitten County and the fiscal court, is the building right across from Grateful Life is the old pleasure aisle fitness center. And we are going to be developing that building into a 180-bed residential treatment facility. This will increase capacity in Northern Kentucky by 80% with Transitions. Right now, we have about, just a little bit under 100 residential beds, not counting the Grateful Life Center, but two other facilities that we have. So going from about 100 beds to 180, we're increasing 80 beds, 80% increase. With that increase and, you know, the prevalence of addiction, I'm very confident that we'll be able to offer treatment, same-day treatment. So if someone calls right now at 7:30, and they're ready to come into treatment, we're going to be able to say, "Just come on in." And if you haven't had dinner, we'll have some food for you, just come on in right now. In my business, I can't wait and say, "Hey, can you come in tomorrow?" And it pains me to hear even a two-day waitlist, because two days could be like two years, and they're not going to come in. So we can't, you know, if they call today, we have to make a treatment bed available. We just have to. So that's the goal, and I'm very confident that once the building is up and running, and hopefully it's late spring or early summer, when those open the doors, we'll have a big open house and invite everybody, so we're very excited. And it is right in the city of Erlanger, so I thank you to the city of Erlanger for welcoming us in, or continuing in and increasing capacity. It's going to be a really good thing. I've been doing this work for about 30 years, and you don't get too many opportunities like this in a career to really make a strong impact. We talk, I don't, we're talking about solutions up here, and, you know, we all know how big the problem is. And this is a real, I think it's a real positive solution for Northern Kentucky, so we're excited about it. I want to turn over whatever time I have left, hopefully a little bit, to a friend, Beau, who wants to, I'm going to ask him to share a little bit, and you can probably go right to that mic, and I'm going to turn it over to him. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Biding. Hi, everybody. My name is Beau. I am a recovering heroin addict. Mr. Biding asked me to come give a quick version of my story, but first, I just want to thank everybody without people like Without people like you, I'm dead right now. I'm not staying in here. My addiction, it's taken everything from me. It's taken my ability to be a father. I have a two-year-old daughter. I just found out last Friday that I'm getting divorced, and that's after, you know, eight months of sobriety. So, you know, to see people come in here and they care, it means a lot to me. Because I've got a chance today to be that father, to at least be a parent, if not a husband, to be a son. I was raised in Fort Mitchell, and I had a great upbringing. I had a loving family. I wasn't, if he was an ace score, my ace score would have been low. But this is a progressive illness. I started drinking early, and that was the culture. When you're in a culture like that, it was all right for all my buddies, but you put someone with what I've gone on in that environment, and it progressed, it progressed, it progressed. I was down in Lexington, working on my master's degree when I started messing around with opiates. I barely remember, somehow I finished my master's degree, I barely remember it. I moved back up home, and the pills went away, the pills got expensive. I went to heroin. I kept a heroin addiction a secret from my wife and friends and family for six years. And, you know, until it all came crumbling down, I couldn't keep it up anymore. Pawn-in, selling everything I owned, emotionally, abusing my wife, just not being a father. There, from the outside, from the outside, it looked all right. I've worked in the nonprofit world and finance for about five years, I worked in the corporate world for about another five years. I kept a job, but it progressed, it kept progressing. So when it all came down, after all the money, and, you know, I couldn't hide it anymore, I had a, my wife's cousin came over one day, and she said, will you go to detox if there's a bed open? And then she put aside, they never have a bed open. So I said, oh, absolutely, I'll go, you know? Shut them up, keep doing what I want to do. There was a bed open. So on a rainy Sunday morning, I got dropped off at detox, and it was rough, but I stayed. I stayed there, and at that point, it was, you know, I'm just, at that point, I'm done. I'm spent, I'm ready to be over. And I never knew there was a way out. I had no idea that there was a way out. I thought I was just going to get high until I died. I looked forward to the dying part many times. You know, there were times I'd wake up and be like, ah, you know? So they suggested I went to the Grateful Life Center, and like I said, at that point, I'm doing whatever I'm told. Being in treatment, I've been there now, I finished the main part of the program, I stayed on as assistant staff. It's given me, you know, it's given me time for my brain to heal, it's given me time for my soul to heal. Early on, it was being at a house with a bunch of other guys who'd been through what I went through that kept me there. But all the way through, from the staff people there, you know, to all the guys in the house, there's a bunch of different factors, but it all came together. It was what I needed, after how far I had taken it, to get back to being useful, to being a productive member of society, which is what I hope to be. I've never been to jail, I don't have a record, I could go out, you know, I've got education, but I felt an obligation to stay at that place, and to try to help the new guys there because of what I was given. And I'm forever grateful for that place, for the chance to sit down and just heal physically, mentally, emotionally. Because I personally, for me, I don't believe I could have done it just out. I tried at home, I tried at home 1,000 times, and I could never quit. So thank you for listening to my story, thank you for being here, thank you for supporting the cause.
Thank you for sharing your story. We really appreciate it. Our next speaker is Danielle Matthew with St. Elizabeth.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I work with St. Elizabeth Baby Steps Program, and what the Baby Steps Program is at St. Elizabeth, it was started by a nurse who saw a need in the community, that there was a need for help for moms that were pregnant or parenting that were dealing with substance use. And through that, seeing that need, it just grew and grew, and continues to grow rapidly. What our program does is we identify either a mom that's pregnant or parenting that's dealing with substance use, and we meet them wherever they're at with that need. We get self-referrals, referrals from family members, physicians, social work, CPS, Child Protective Services, really anybody in the community. We also have a referral system that Epic, which is a computer system at St. Elizabeth, if a woman comes into the hospital and has a diagnosis of pregnancy and has a positive urine drug screen, we get a referral on that woman as well. We've had a woman that came into the emergency department that was eight weeks pregnant, that didn't know she was pregnant, found out she's eight weeks, and we had that early intervention. She ended up going to treatment and started at eight weeks. So that was a huge, that was our earliest identifier was at eight weeks. So we were really, really excited to be able to help someone that early. What our program also does is we help, we have a community health nurse, RN case manager, that goes into the homes and works with the moms one-on-one. She does education, she does NAS Neonatal Abstinence Syndrome education. Sometimes she does education just on anything going on in their life. Maybe she goes into their home, and they're just struggling with just something that's what to us may seem like a normal, just everyday thing that you're dealing with, and she'll sit down and just talk to them and talk through it with them, and just be a support system for them. We do evidence-based training, a nurturing parenting class for the women that are in the Campbell County and Kenton County jails. We do the training with them, and then they take that certificate and present that to the judge as their parenting class. Our girls get, that go through the MAT, which is the Medication-Assisted Treatment Program, they get individual therapy, group therapy, IOP, all of the education resources. We see a lot of the barriers in our community are transportation, just daycare for their other children, so we're able to help them with a lot of the wraparound services. So we're kind of like a one-stop shop. If someone is identified as being, you know, pregnant, it's like they get referred to us, and then, you know, we do an intake, and it's like, well, what are your needs? And then from that point, we refer them out. So maybe someone doesn't have, you know, a good living situation, or they're couch surfing, or some, you know, something like that, so maybe they need a higher level of care. So at that time, we refer them to Transitions. Or maybe they, like I said earlier, barriers or transportation, we can provide bus passes to them. So we really just look at each individual person and see what needs are identified, and then we can refer them out. We work very closely with all of the agencies in the area, and have great working relationships with them. So anyone that's pregnant, it's just been an amazing thing that we've seen this program grow, and just be able to help these women, and see, we have success stories. And Tasha's going to come up and actually speak and tell her success story, and it's just been an amazing honor to be able to work with her and see how much she's grown in the time that she's been with us. So Tasha.
Hi, my name's Tasha. So December 1st, I'll be 10 months sober because of Baby Steps. I was using before I got pregnant, I got pregnant in October, and I couldn't stop. It wasn't enough, I guess, I mean, it was, but it wasn't. You just, you want to put it down, but you just, it's not something you can just sit down and walk away from regardless of what you're going through in life. I went to the doctor, actually, my son had already been taken away from me, but he was with family, and I think that was probably one of the worst slash good things that happened, because had he have been in foster care, I think I would have strived a little bit harder, but because he was with family, I wasn't as concerned. So I still kept doing what I was doing, and I was lying to family, I was lying to the social workers, everybody, even my doctor. After I got pregnant, they had tested me, and I had tested positive for opiates, and she asked, well, that was the final turning point, she asked if it was heroin. And I could have lied, and I could have continued to say, no, I was just taking pills, you know, whatever. But I was honest, and they had the flyer there for the Baby Steps Program, and I'd actually, before she came in to tell me that the results came back positive, I was going to take the flyer and do it on my own, but I don't think I would have. I'm glad she, you know, found out that I had been using, because she volunteered to call Baby Steps for me. And that afternoon, I got a call from Stacy Nance, and she immediately got me into the program down at Norton Hospital in Louisville. I went down there, and I did the detox for two days, came up here, and got into the medical assisted treatment at Dr. Keller's office. And from then on, I worked with Andrea from Baby Steps, she's been great, I mean, they're like family, they literally do treat you like you're somebody, like, you know, they care. And if it wasn't for them, I don't know where I would be today. And still today, even as good as I'm doing, like, they're friends, you know, on Facebook, I see them at least once a week when I go to Dr. Keller's office for counseling and meetings and whatever, and it truly is like a second family, which is what I needed. I had a great family all along, I just didn't know, because I wouldn't be honest with any of them. I was too afraid to say, hey, I'm addicted to heroin on top of being pregnant and everything else. So yeah, I'm very, very blessed for Baby Steps, it's a miracle, it really does happen. You just have to want it, and even if you're scared, I don't know, you just, you have to reach out. It's terrifying, but I don't know, there are people out there willing to help, and it's great. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rebecca Ellison, and she's with CHNK Behavioral Health.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you for having us. It's kind of humbling being up here with such knowledgeable and caring people. So I'll try to keep it short as well, just kind of explain to you what we're doing in response to this epidemic, this issue that just seems to be growing and growing, and we're, I'm on the treatment end. I'm a substance use therapist, and I work side-by-side with, you know, many passionate, knowledgeable individuals who are, you know, fighting this illness, or this issue from trauma all the way to people who have identified as crossing into addiction. We at CHNK Behavioral Health, we're kind of doing, my boss will say that we're doing a rebranding, kind of like when Kentucky Fried Chicken went to KFC to kind of be discreet about the whole fried part. We, so historically, we have worked with children who are put in state's custody and removed from the home, and put into our placement for, I believe, six to nine months, on average. We are now reaching out into the community, and we're in schools, we have an outpatient facility. We're doing our best to, you know, work with our resources, work with our community partners, and respond to the needs that the community is asking. We offer a range of services, all the way from like case management, which is very much like someone who's just a supportive role, who will connect you with the resources that are within the community, with the hope to kind of make you self-sufficient and keep you aware with what is going on, to drive you to doctor's appointments, help you with tutoring, mentoring, anything along that continuum of care. And then we offer all the way to residential services, where currently, we do have, I believe we have the only substance use residential treatment in Northern Kentucky, and we're looking to very quickly expand that to PRTF, which I try to avoid acronyms as a social worker, it's hard, which is residential, PRTF, psychiatric residential treatment facility. So we're soon to be extending to that, and then as well as day treatment to get the littler kiddos who are struggling to stay in school. So what we're doing is we're treating trauma, we're treating substance use disorders, we are treating, we are also doing prevention, we're, I think, the only facility in Northern Kentucky doing prevention, and that's Ms. Valencia Dickerson. She's a clinician that's embedded in the school, she's in Tishner, she wrote it down for me, Tishner, Arnett, and Howell. And this is a grant that's based towards the kids who are at very high risk for truancy, suspension, and involvement in the juvenile justice system. So what that is, is that's individuals that are targeted, or that are identified based on teachers, based on self-referral, based on parents, based on peer referral, and Valencia offers that, it's a free service, and they're in the schools, individual counseling, group therapy. So we have responded to that, and we're hopeful to get into, you know, as many schools who are willing to have us, and who will partner up with us. We also do individual therapy. We have clinicians that all use evidence-based studies, and we also are a very holistic approach, so we're now even treating family members individually that are identified as being at risk themselves, or that are some, that hopefully we can educate them and provide the treatment so that we can help deliver a very holistic familial approach. We also offer intensive outpatient for substance use and mental health. We now have three different substance use in Boone County. We're also attached to Covington Independent Schools, and then at our location in Covington. And then we also have a mental health group in Covington, and we're looking to expand. So the point of me telling you all of these services is we're doing everything we can to individualize the care of these young kids who are victim to trauma, to neglect, to abuse, these high-risk kids who had exposure and modeling in these homes, and who are involved in this cycle of just negative coping skills, destructive coping skills, ineffective communication. So our hope is to, you know, start, we've seen kids as low, or as young as four years old, to identify these kids who, you know, would benefit from this treatment, because as was mentioned earlier, and is mentioned in every single mental health and addiction presentation, is this trauma, is this co-occurring disorders. They had said with substance use, the last number I read was 80%, and I would argue, if you include trauma, and that is close to 100. Everyone is, you know, seeking some sort of relief in trying to avoid this pain, okay? So what we're doing is we are treating this, and we're working with Senate Bill 200, if you guys are familiar with that, that's kind of taking these kids who are involved in the juvenile justice system, and instead of moving right to incarceration, first trying treatment. That's not to say that that always works, we're not trying to remove natural consequences, you know, that, I believe that that is, you know, relevant and pertinent in some situations. But to treat this trauma, to treat this pain, and to treat it as a family approach. And so with that, we take referrals, we work with Child Protective Services, we work a lot with the juvenile system, the department, the DJJ, we take self-referrals. We've even had kids in the state of Kentucky, you have to be 16 years old to make a self-referral and to consent to your own substance use treatment. So we've had people stay the entire six months with us, residential, intensive outpatient, individual, aftercare, and they have consented themselves. So the hope is just that we keep spreading the message that this is, that this stuff is treatable, this pain that, you know, people are seeking these substances to get just some relief and eventually lead into addiction, like, we're starting as young as we can, and our hope is that we just keep spreading the word and let you guys know that we're here, we want to help. I work with a bunch of very passionate, understanding, knowledgeable, young men and women, and we're happy to respond to your needs. And that's, I think that's about all that I can share, and I'm happy to answer any extra questions whenever we open it up.
Thank you so much. Just one little housekeeping thing, if anybody needs any note cards to write questions for the question-and-answer session, please raise your hand, we'll bring some around to you. And if you want to pass your questions to the end of the row, we'll collect them as we go. The next speaker is Teri Carl and Jason Merrick from the Kenton County Detention Center.
It's great to be here tonight. I just want to reflect on when I start noticing individuals leaving the jail. Most of them in the jail were, you know, they communicated well, they worked well, then you hear after they leave the jail... Then you hear after they leave the jail, one or two days, then you find out that they overdosed and died. At that time, I really didn't understand what the problem was because it was my, it happened after the legislators cracked down on prescription drugs. Then, excuse me, I'm fighting a cold, and I kept on noticing it. It didn't happen just once or twice or three times. It was starting on a regular basis. Every time somebody would get out of jail, I would notice, and I'd get feedback that the individual, within a short period of time after leaving the jail, would overdose and die. I started trying to research it and understand it myself, and then Dr. Engel came, and he says, "Once you join our committee, we're starting a heroin response team." And I said, "That's great." And I still didn't really understand it. Took me a while. Excuse me. Excuse me. Then after being on the team and being in the committee, I started understanding a little bit better than I wanted to do more. Then I, Judge Knuckelman got elected, and we talked, and it wasn't even a second thought with him. He says, "We're going to do something, and I'll support you in any way I can." I contribute the success that what we've done at Kenton County to Judge Knuckelman and Jason Merrick for what, how they progressed and supported this program. I'd keep on talking, but I'm having trouble right now. But I can't thank those two individuals enough for where we're at today. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Carl. And I'll pick up there by saying, he's being rather modest, as you can probably tell, and without his forward thought and understanding of the situation, the program at the jail never would have been born. What Mr. Carl's referring to is our JSAP program. It's called a Jail Substance Abuse Program, and we're licensed by the state of Kentucky as an alcohol and other drug entity, and I'm proud to say that we've dedicated 125 beds at a 606-bed facility to the treatment of substance use disorders for men and women. Right now, at this very moment, there are 90 men and 35 women engaged in residential treatment at your detention center over on the 3L Highway, just right around the corner. We treat from, you know, as you've heard here, there's lots of different ways to treat substance use disorder, and it all really comes down to the substance of use, right? We've got abstinence-based programs, we've got medically assisted-based programs, we've got programs for pregnant females, we've got all different kinds of models of treatment. And one of the first things that we worked on is, well, what fits at the jail? What kind of model are we looking at to treat our men and women at the jail? We've got some time with them, so we're looking at a longer-term residential program, and we decided on a biological, bio-psycho-social model of treatment. We want to recognize addiction, what it is, as a brain disorder, as a disease. So we want to give men and women the opportunity to heal, and that takes time. Biologically, we recognize that these neurotransmitters in the brain and body aren't being produced at healthy rates, so given a few months, we can start to stabilize, we can start to see, the fall gets lifted, people are able to articulate thought, they're able to start making rational decisions for themselves again. And then psychologically, we're dealing with a lot of behavioral issues, right? We're dealing with people who have, don't really play well with communities, with society. So we want to address the cognition of these men and women. We want to address their criminality. We want to address their addictive behaviors. So we offer a CBT program, Cognitive Behavioral Therapy Program. It was designed by Hazelton Betty Ford out of Minnesota. Some of you probably recognize that name. It is the gold standard of treatment in this nation. They were the very first treatment provider in the United States, and they continue to be a leader in this industry. So the other side of that is the social component. Men and women, these, at the detention center, are, you can say without a doubt, are treatment-resistant, to say the least. They're, you know, engaged in criminal behavior, breaking laws, and we want to show them, teach them, help them to discover how to interact with society in a positive way. And luckily, for those that helped design the jail, Mr. Carl and Judge Knuckelman and other members of the county administration had programming in mind when they designed, engineered, and built the Kenton County Detention Center. So I don't know if any of you have been in there, hopefully as a guest and not as a client, but either way, it would be fine. Our jail isn't like your typical jail. It's set up in a way that is, it's dorm setting. It's a dorm setting. It's not, you're like singled-out cells and bars. We have 70 men and 70 women living in dormitory-style community, in different dorms, of course. But so in our Pod 104, as an example, we have 70 men that are all engaged in substance use treatment, and they act as a community. They act as, they have different job duties. They're all assigned responsibilities. They have homework. They go to classes every day. They go to meetings every night, and they have to learn how to work with each other, and that's a big part of developing and sustaining their recovery. I'm happy to report that we also are a part of the state SAP system. If you've ever been engaged in criminal justice in Kentucky, you've probably known someone that's been sapped, or they've been ordered to attend a SAP program, and we are part of that division now. So it's not all county tax dollars paying for this program. We are supported by state tax dollars as well. We get a per DM per day for each of our male clients engaged in treatment, and that also helped us to raise the bar, to raise the level of care that we have. We have very low caseloads. For those of you that are in the field, we have 20 clients per clinician, which is almost unheard of in this industry. So we're able to really focus on our clients and offer them the best evidence-based treatment possible. Now, as an addition to this model, the bio-psycho-social model of treatment, we also incorporate medication as well, and we provide a medication that's approved by the FDA to reduce relapse, to add an extra level of protection and safety once an individual's released from jail. And that's a naltrexone for extended release. It's also known as vivitrol is the brand name. It's a once-per-month injection that blocks the effects of opiates and alcohol, coincidentally, for up to 30 days. And what that means for someone is that they can get a free injection before they walk out that door of the jail after receiving several months of inpatient treatment, quality inpatient treatment, I might add, and then get out into the community without that protection, with that care, and have those referrals to the community resources, including medical providers, including outpatient therapies, including housing referrals, employment opportunities, educational opportunities. The collaboration of the folks that come into the jail, many of them right here in this panel, and a lot of them in the audience as well, is really outstanding. I really got to say, it does take an army, and we certainly have that in Kenton County and Erlanger. So I'm already running out of time. I can see, I'm not checking my email here. I'm watching my stopwatch, stop clock. But I want to touch on a couple more things, and then I'm going to switch gears, and hopefully you all want to leave with an overdose prevention rescue kit and naloxone rescue kit. I've got 48 kits to give out here tonight. As part of Mr. Carl's program at the jail, we offer training, overdose prevention and response training with free naloxone and accidental needle-stick prevention training for all law enforcement in Northern Kentucky with sharps-resistant search gloves. It's available free of charge. There's no charge to the taxpayers, there's no charge to the individuals. It's funded through a private foundation that you're all familiar with, I'm sure, the RC Durr Foundation, through the Health Department and many other partners involved, to provide that medication and this training.